Tonight, we have Lieutenant Joseph Crawford here with the Salvation Army to do our invocation. And our pledge of allegiance tonight will be by Alex Goring, and she's a Paducah-Tillman High School senior with the Speech Club at Tillman. So Lieutenant Crawford, thank you for being here tonight and for your work in the community with the Brookport tragedy, and also with being so much assistance to us with our homeless warming center that we've been working on.
Thank you very much. Let us pray. Holy Father, we come to you right now, and thank you for the people you've sent to this community to guide others, to be your hands and feet, to guide indirect. I pray for this meeting, your spirit will dwell over this meeting, and your spirit will direct people in this community to the direction that you want it to go in. Ask for your strength, for your blessing, and for you to empower the people here to do your will. All these things I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Alex?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, ma'am.
We do have a little change in the order. We're going to wait on the presentation of the Columbia.
Our consultant is still in transit from the Nashville Airport, so if the commission is agreeable, we need to have the executive session for a couple of items. I'd recommend we do that, and then come back out and hear the presentation.
So I'm gonna go on with the minutes and the appointments, so that we don't make Doc Haddig sit out there during all that. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for December 10th, 2013, called in December 10th, 2013, regular city commission meetings be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Any discussion? City clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, under appointments?
I move that the Board of Commissioners...
Do what?
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt.
Okay. I'm new at this, sorry. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby make the following reappointments as members of the Brook Stadium Commission: Howard Finley, whose term expires December 5th, 2016, and Dr. Frank Haddig and Greg McKeel, whose terms expire December 5th, 2017. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Kaler in reappointing Howard Finley, Greg McKeel, and Dr. Frank Haddig as members of the Brook Stadium Commission.
Second.
All right, so glad to have this good team still working together on Brook Stadium. Doc Haddig? City clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the word "team" is very appropriate for these gentlemen, and if any of us have ventured out to the ballpark, it's a very nostalgic environment out there, and that's what keep bringing the teams back here. Once they get here, they love it, they wanna come back. And so Doc and the guys, they do a great job, and I'm glad to be on that board, and we've worked some scheduling so I can make more of the meetings. It's kinda crazy, but you guys are doing a great job, and appreciate you.
I appreciate you being on that board, too, Commissioner. Anyone else? Right. Roll call. Did we do that already?
Yes.
All right, so we're ready to suspend the order of business, and I think Commissioner Abraham, you have that?
I have that. I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, do you have the addition?
I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: future sale or acquisition of specific parcels of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B, and issues which might lead to the appointment dismissal or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61.8101F.
Second.
Okay, we will be out. We will not be making any decisions on what we're talking about in executive sessions tonight, but we will be back out.
Do you have any call to Rose?
Sure.
City session. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Reconvene into open session.
Yes, so we will reconvene into open session, and we'll go back to our presentation of the Columbia Theater Conceptual Plan. And we have representatives here tonight from West Lake Reid... Darlene, thank you.
Good evening again.
Hi.
I'm Darlene Mazzone, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Columbia Theater Task Force. And you all know that I'm a publisher and a writer, so that would...it would follow that I love a good story, and I have a good story for you tonight. Once upon a time, in a town called Paducah, there was built a stately, beautiful building designed to house a new-fangled entertainment idea called a movie. Not only did this palatial structure illuminate the grand boulevard of our visionary little community, it also was an architectural representation of the very artistry it was created to purvey. Alas, the winds of time ultimately extinguished the lights of the grand movie palace, and the landmark building that lit up Broadway lay dormant for many years. But then, a small band of citizens went out into the land to seek the finest artisans to bring the grand lady back to life. Tonight, it is our pleasure to introduce you to those two fine artisans. West Lake Reid Liskowski is one of the most respected architectural design firms in the country for the restoration of historic theaters. The foundations of their firm began in the '70s with the design of Blossom Music Center, the summer home of the Cleveland Orchestra, and it has continued to build through significant work for more than 230 performance venues nationwide, including four of the nation's five largest performing arts centers. Architect and principal Paul Semborski has more than 30 years of experience delivering successful designs for over 100 theaters, including both large-scale multi-phased projects and small-scale restorations, more like our own. Paul is a member of the Theater Historical Society of America, and serves on the boards of the Cleveland Playhouse and the League of Historic American Theaters. Along with him this evening is Matthew Jennings. Matthew is an architect with West Lake Reid Liskowski, and he specializes in preserving the heritage of our cities and towns, and that includes the many historic theaters in our communities. Matt is an Architectural Fellow for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and has performed architectural consulting to the National Trust on several projects. He, too, is a member of the League of Historic American Theaters. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, I'd like for you to welcome Paul and Matt, who will present to you a conceptual study of the restoration of our Columbia Theater. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have about 20 slides, and I think we have up to an hour of time. I don't think we'll take that long, but what's most important for us is for you to understand what we're showing. If we present something and you don't understand it, please stop us. We wanna have plenty of time for questions and answers. Just a few other things about our firm. We were actually founded in 1905, and we've been in continuous practice. It's interesting to look at your theater. This was built in 1927, and then operated until 1987. 2017 will be 90 years. It's something we should all keep in mind, you know, for the project. Ours is a collaborative process. When Matt and I first came to town, we don't come and say, "This is the answer." We don't know the answer. We don't know what the ingredients are until we work with you. So we had the good fortune of meeting with representatives from the Carson Center, representatives from West Kentucky Technical College, and the Market House. We under...I think we got to know well your community and what your need for the arts are here. A premise, we...a lot of what we're doing here is based on renovating the Columbia to be a motion picture house, a screen, a digital screen house. So what we're gonna be showing has a lot to do with creating three screens within this building. We worked with the Paducah Film Society and the Task Force to collect the information, but we needed a driver, and the driver was the Paducah Film Society. What is the niche in the market that we need to fill, and that's working, and that we...what we can do better? So that was a big driver. Matt and I are gonna tag-team on this, but this is an interesting problem. You have...if you haven't all been in the theater, find a time from Randy to go in. I know Jeff's been in with us and others, but you have two amazing styles in there. You have the Adam S. style, that's still largely intact, and then you have the Scourge style, or Art Deco style, and the two want to coexist, and we are gonna figure out how to make them coexist, but then we also have to thread into this all the new technology to make this a viable venue for the next, you know, for the next 100 years as a film house. So we're gonna go through about 20 slides, and again, ask some questions if you have them as we go along. And this is sort of the table of contents: introduction, historic context, assessment, proposed concept, cost estimate, and conclusions. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of you on behalf of Matt, on behalf of our firm, and behalf of the 10 other people in our office who had the good fortune of working for you. You hired us. We don't take that lightly. We...the products that we produce are testament of our work. If you haven't seen this study, I think we have extra copies. We had round one, round two, round three. Randy's been awesome in helping us both guide us through this process, and then also help us proof and the drafts, the various drafts that we've created. And we hope that we've captured the essence of what we wanna do here. Again, this is preliminary, so there's...we can...numbers can go here and there, walls can move here and there, but I think by and large, at this state in the game...stage in the game, we've captured what we want for the Columbia Theater. I think we need to please...stay away. A is the theater, as you well know. We're...there's a couple other buildings worth pointing out, though. C is the arcade theater, and we toured the arcade theater because we wondered if that could possibly be a part of this project. B is the arcade building, and D is the Catholic Church and its addition. A challenge we have with the Columbia is we have very little access behind the building to the theater. The good news is, we probably don't need a lot of access. If this was a performing arts center, and we were loading in shows, and we had that sort of need, then we would have a real problem. We do have access in the back, along the east side. There is a door along the south side of Building C, the arcade theater, but we don't need a lot of backstage access to the Columbia if it's gonna be a film house. When we toured the arcade theater, we saw the opportunity, and it's still there, but it's not your real estate, or it's not part of this project. And frankly, with the size of the Columbia being some 17,000 square feet, you really don't need it. For what I think we wanna do here, you don't need that extra square footage.
I was gonna jump in a little and sort of walk through some of the background historic information for everyone, and the image on the right, I'm sure you're all very familiar with. It's the current state of the marquee, beautiful terracotta work, and from my point of view, it's in great condition, which means it's not falling off the building yet. Generally, that's when things go wrong with terracottas. You'll know it when it starts falling off the building. We're not at that point yet, so I'm very happy about that. On the left is an image you might not be as familiar with. It's showing the original marquee and original blade sign from the 1927 facade. So the next slide, I'm gonna talk about the two styles just briefly. I don't wanna dig too deeply into sort of the architectural side of it, but you're gonna hear us throwing around a couple of these terms, so I might as well get them out of the way early for everyone. Paul mentioned Adam-esque. Adam-esque was created as a style created by three Scottish brothers back in the 1760s, and it was a reaction to the very busy, very decorative architecture style at the time. It was simplified, cleaner, and very elegant in comparison. And this was the style that was sort of a heavy influence on the design of the theater in the '20s. As sort of an opposite side of the coin, the Scourge style, was three Greek brothers who immigrated to St. Louis, I believe it was, and worked in a hotel until they could pool their money together and buy a theater that was going out of town, or going out of business. By the end of their careers, they were the presidents of the National Theater Company, the 20th Century Fox, and United Artists. So they pretty much could run theaters better than anyone on earth, and they took care of, in one way or another, thousands of theaters. They weren't actually architects, but they hired and had many architects working for them. So when the '50s rolled around, and there was a massive change in technology for theaters, theaters needed to be upgraded, or they wouldn't be able to stay in business. Modernism was popular, and a lot of theaters were having the ornaments stripped out in the process of having their technology upgraded. Well, Charles Scourge did not like that approach. He preferred to go the other direction. He thought going to a theater should be more of a celebration, and if anything, he thought theaters weren't ornate enough. So he went the other direction, and you can see on the right is the sort of a hyper-extravagant, lavish approach he went to, that he preferred when he got to have his say about how a theater was getting ready done. So those are the two styles sort of at play inside the Columbia. And the image on the top is pretty much the current condition. You can see quite a bit of the Scourge style above the proscenium. The proscenium is the arch that goes over the top of the stage, and you can see remnants of it across the theater. I wanna point the opposite view out, looking towards the back of the theater. You'll see what looks like a giant, dark, looming box where the balcony used to be. That was from work done in the '70s, which turned the theater balcony into a second screen. The economics of film theaters back in the '70s started to really change, and one of the ways theaters were fighting to stay alive was adding second screens. They did it in a variety of ways. Sometimes they split the theaters right down the middle, did it that way. At this time, there was a sizable balcony, so that was converted to a second screen. Just...it's something we'll talk about a little later, but if you keep that image in mind on the top, our future plans that we'll get into in a little bit, will actually push that wall farther away from us, and push it back towards where the historic beginning of the balcony was, which is several feet farther back. It'll be less obvious. And more importantly, on the bottom image, you see a historic stained glass light monitor that's on the ceiling. Right now, this wall, which is just difficult to make up, actually clips that and lands across it and sort of hides about a third of it. Once we push that wall back, it'll allow us to bring back that light monitor, which is actually up there in the ceiling. It's just been painted over. All the pieces and parts of it are still there. It's basically just waiting to be restored. Even the parts that are missing are fortunately...they're just set aside up in the attic up there, waiting to be put back together. So with a little work, the eventual ceiling will resemble the ceiling you see here with recreated historic light fixtures, the light monitor coming back, and it'll resemble the Adam-esque approach of the ceiling almost in its entirety. I just have to point this out. I have to say, as a historic architect, I love it when we find a good picture of an interior space that really tells. It's dateable. This is 1944 by the title of the movie that's on display there. It tells us a huge amount of information, and I always like to put the call out to every community to let us know, you know, somebody's grandpa was an usher, somebody's dad snapped a picture of their mom standing in front of the concession. All these pictures and memories all start to come back in when theaters start to show activity and try and come back to life. And we use this information to come in both as a teaching tool. Later on, we can put together displays and websites and that sort of thing, but there's a ton of information that we have to sort of find out on how to do this right. And when I say there's a lot of sort of missing parts to the puzzle, it's kind of demonstrated by this. The top picture is the original design drawing from the architect for the Columbia Theater. You might notice a few minor differences between what was actually built and what the architect had drawn. Back in the day, it was not uncommon at all for sort of the architectural drawings to be more of a guide than sort of a hard and fast rule, and so you would have these really loose sets of architectural drawings, and then the local construction and the local contractor, they'd sort of take it from there and run with it. So the original drawings that we have are really nice to have, but they vary wildly from what was actually built. So there's a lot of information we always look for in the process to help us make the decisions on how to restore the building. I wanted to point this out before we sort of show sort of the same kind of issues on the floor plans. This...the bottom image is the existing plan as it stands today. This is the remnants of the original plan. It's really hard to make out, I apologize, but the condition is, as you can imagine, pretty rough. The old reflected ceiling plan is actually drawn. What was built resembles that not at all. Really, in no reference at all do the ceiling plans match. Same thing, there were originally planned balconets, the little tiny fake balconies that ran down the sides. Those were planned, but what was actually built didn't really resemble that either. I mean, basically, we do have stairs on the right sides, the general outline, stage location, and the sort of the big picture stuff is there, but beyond that, there's a lot of information still left to find out. So I enjoy finding out that sort of information. This...I wanted to turn it over to Paul. He wanted to sort of talk people through this. It should really help kind of give you a feel for what's going on as we work through the theater.
This is what we call a section drawing through the building, and there's so much detail, and you can see in the 124 pages here, there's a lot of information, but there's about five big moves we're making here. We'll talk about the stagehouse first. That's this area. Because this would be a film house, we don't really need the backstage support anymore. We...it will be nice to be able to do community theater, to do comedy, to do music, to be able to have some of that, but this is...what we're showing here is primarily a film house. So one of the things we're gonna talk about, and Matt's gonna show and plan, but is, we said, what if we took the stagehouse, and rather than buying more real estate, or finding more real estate, or trying to dream about getting the arcade theater, which we don't have, why don't we use the stagehouse area where we can put backstage support, where we can put the speakers, where we can put the air handling units, where we can put the condensing units, and we can stack all of that inside here? There's a gridiron up here. Wonderful to have, we don't need it, we'll just abandon it in place. We will essentially move the upstage wall of the stagehouse from here, come all the way forward, just five feet upstage of the proscenium. So make a long story short, we're gonna use the stage area to do a lot of the backstage support. Normally, you wouldn't put that on the stage, but we don't have another place to put it, and it makes perfect sense for us to put it here, to put it in the stagehouse. So that's a big change. Number two, we're gonna go into a little bit of detail of what we'll call the main auditorium. We're bringing it down in size. It's gonna be some 240, 250 seats, rather than a very big, deep auditorium. And we're gonna do that because number three is, we're gonna take the lobby, and we're gonna push it into the theater, so there's more patron amenities. A nice sized lobby, a concession area, proper-sized toilets, office space, all of those kinds of things. Number four, we're proposing to take the balcony and create two screens. So...and those are 140, 114 seats each. And we now have three screens, which is what Paducah Film Society would need to have a viable business here, three screens, different sizes. We would move the wall back, as Matt was talking about. This wall, right now, cuts into this beautiful arc glass. We move it back. We create...we put the projection here, we put the projection up here, but we create these two screens up above, two screening rooms. And lastly, number five, we've already talked about it, but we're gonna bring back these...recreate these two incredible styles, the Adam S. and the Scourge. So that's kind of the fifth big move we're gonna make here. Any questions along the way? I know it's a lot of information. We live in this world daily, but that kind of drawing, which is...can be a very big drawing, and a very informative and a very colorful drawing on our screen, should be a prop for you moving forward. But it really tells the story of the floor plans and what we wanna accomplish here.
The image on the top is the existing, again. On the bottom is what we're proposing. We'll start from the left side and sort of work across. Paul had mentioned the stagehouse. Basically, you'll end up with a functioning movie screen, curtains, and a few sort of backdrops, instead of the full set...full line sets that you would have on a sort of a traditional working, live theater. Just to sort of explain the challenges in restoring old theaters, when this theater was originally built, a line set, which is sort of the pipe that carries a curtain up and down, those were built to withstand about...or hold about 500 pounds. By modern standards, that should be at least 1,200 pounds. So you have an entire system designed to do, you know, a third of what you would need to do for a modern system, which is why switching to, you know, live music, film, comedy, that sort of entertainment, instead of live theater, makes a lot of sense here. So in the back, we end up with a...we end up with a handicap-accessible restroom, a green room that could be used for a variety of purposes. You end up with a lift to get people back to the backstage area to make it accessible, and then the rest of the backstage stuff is basically support, mechanical, electrical, audiovisual, theatrical speakers, that sort of thing. We've talked about adding an extension onto the stage to give you more flexibility. This extension could be temporary, it could be taken up, put down, a lot of variety in the way that can be configured. You have your basic seating layout that really reflects what's there currently. The big change seating-wise is across the back. For a lot of venues now, having a concession that faces into the audience chamber is a huge plus, especially if you're doing, say, comedy or something like that. You can go to the back, you can get your beer, it's more of a festive activity, but then if you're doing film, you can close this side of the concession stand. You also have a forward-facing concessions that's also utilized by the upper theaters. So that way, you have sort of a dual-purpose concession area that can be used for live events, or it can be used for traditional film. You have two sizable restrooms. We were able to get the count up almost to what...or pretty much what you would need for new construction, so we always kind of pat ourselves on the back when we can get enough restrooms into an old theater, because that's usually a pretty large challenge. We're adding a new elevator into the corner to get accessibility upstairs. We'd be restoring the original segregated entrance down on the other side, as A, it would be also still used for egress, but it's, you know, a great teaching opportunity. The same with the historic segregated bathrooms upstairs would be restored, but not usable by the public. The original seating configuration was changed back in the '70s, so we really can't go back to that, it's long gone. There, we'd be doing the full restoration of the vestibule area, the ticketing, and then possibly the marquee and the blade sign. So that's sort of from front to back is the layout for the approach. As we move up, as you see on the...we call this the mezzanine level. On the mezzanine level is where you would exit the new elevator. You would come out into the mezzanine, and you would choose either direction to go into either of the new theaters on these sides. We've added...expanded some of the existing restrooms up there to make it a little more convenient and usable. Other than that, it's pretty much pure preservation and restoration going on up here. What you're looking at here is a very tiny, very tight projection booth. Digital projection doesn't require nearly the space of the old-school projection, but we're going to try and get a 35-millimeter projector in there, too, so the film house can watch its own old films the way they were meant to be seen. And so that might...there will be some modifications and design changes on something like that as we get all the final details for sort of the projector and all of those items that are available to put back in. We go up a little bit higher, and you can see the actual layout for the larger upper theater with the new egress that has to be added to get people out. Adding a second theater requires additional... Adding a second theater requires additional egress to get people out safely. Other than that, it's a fairly clean layout. Seating-wise, I have to put the disclaimer in, those two seats back in this corner right there are only for teenagers who will not be watching the movie anyway. Terrible seats, but the teenagers will love them. Other than that, the sightlines are actually quite good. Oh, yeah, this, you can actually see right down in this little corner, this was the segregated toilets and the originally segregated entrance that would take you up to the upper, upper balcony. All of that's gone, but this sort of zone is still pretty much as it was, so it would be restored and left in position. We'd also be putting back all the old fire escapes, which are currently gone. So just because that's really our only means of egress from up there in a lot of locations, so. This would be the section, I think Paul wanted to say a few things as well, but it makes a little bit more sense in section. This is the mezzanine level where the elevator brings you up. You then walk across this floor to get into the upper theaters. Here, you can see the stacking of the support behind the stage. This would be mechanical systems, audiovisual systems above that. The basement would be reconfigured and opened up for whatever future needs there would be. It could be, it's not a great space down there, but it's, you know, perfectly available for storage, or whatever the theater ends up needing the most. Provides some flexibility. And in case you're wondering, we always get a lot of questions, you know, what is this little doghouse on top of the stagehouse? That's a smoke hatch. So if there had been a fire in the old theater, the smoke hatch would pop open, and the smoke and flames would go out the top of that. We're going to be abandoning that. As you can see, this little wall that we're drawing here sort of becomes our new firewall right there. So technically, there won't be curtains or anything hung up here to burn, which was always the real danger back there. So this area will be open except for mechanical equipment. All the curtains, the screens, and everything that will move up and down will happen right inside this space there. And the flexibility of that, you could still change out the backdrops depending on what you're looking at. It's limited, but, you know, you do have options on what you can do. So there is some flexibility.
The beauty of all of this is, we're kind of building a vessel within an existing building, and the good news is, the existing building is in good shape. It has a newer roof, not a new roof. It's structurally sound from everything we can tell. We have good bones, in terms of the structure. We're not dealing with a wood structure, we're dealing with concrete and steel, which means it's already fire-resistant. So all of that is good. Some other little intangibles we haven't talked about, there's the arcade that we don't even see from the street now. It's not there, it's closed off. It took us to the segregated balcony. We can bring that back, almost like a second alley. And it makes sense. We will use it both for egress, but it'll be egress for the theater and then for the other arcade buildings. We don't have to get into a lot of reraking of the floor. So it's a concrete floor. Yes, there's some leveling where we're going to have the expanded lobby, but it's not such a steep rake, such a steep slope, that we have to get into chiseling it out and rebuilding it. And the other thing, it's a slab on grade, so it's not a supported slab or a supported floor that we have to then re-support. So all of that works really in our favor. What we're building, again, onstage, is work that could always be taken down in the future. A hundred years from now, whatever the technology is, and we're going back to live theater, then we can take out what we built on the stage, take it away. We haven't taken the stagehouse down. Same with the balcony. Yes, we are twinning it, and it's a business decision, and we need to do this to have a viable business. But whatever we put up in the balcony to twin it or to divide it can be taken away. And we don't see any of that being detrimental to us working towards, you know, tax credits if we go down that road. So what does all of this cost? Okay, don't look at that yet. You can look at it, you can get lost in the numbers, but I'm going to give you some big integers, because I've been doing this too long. If you have 17,000 square feet, even if we didn't draw a line on this, if we didn't come here and spend a couple of months and spend a couple of weeks, we'd say $300 a square foot, and this and that, and you're 5.1, 5.6 million dollars, something around those lines. But you just, we know that. That's what these buildings cost. We're putting in all-new systems. There's no mechanical there now. If it is, it doesn't work. There's no electrical, there are no toilets, there's no plumbing, so it's all new. You're going to build that no matter what. And then when you get into these buildings, these systems are a bit more sophisticated. You know, the ductwork is lined and lagged, and the ductwork is suspended on isolated hangers, so you don't hear the noise. So all of that stuff is technically more sophisticated and more expensive. There are, we're going to have 1,200 amps. Why do we need so much? Because we need it for now, and then we need it for the future. We don't have service coming in the building, we have to upgrade, upsize the gas lines, the water lines, all those utilities. So there's a lot that goes into these buildings on just the mechanical, plumbing, heating and cooling, usually 40%. So anyway, what all that says is, this building is about, to renovate this building, it's about $340 a square feet. It comes out to about 5.8 million, some change. And we're going to show another slide where you shouldn't get hung up on that number. And then it breaks down into these different divisions that we have. I'm not minimizing this, I just, if you come away from here and it's, people want to know, what does this cost? How big is it? It's 17,000 square feet, it's $340 a square foot, it's 5.8 million and some change. And then we're going to show how we could minus that. There are some alternates, and we've listed these. These things below are ad-alternates. So there's a beautiful or an interesting fire curtain that could be restored. We don't have money, we've allocated money for it, but we don't have that in, and it's 5.8 million. And then we can go down these. The AV means if we wanted to put all the line sets in, if we wanted to put a sophisticated sound system, if we wanted to put more AV, more than Paducah Film Society needs, we can do that, we can add more money. If we want more drapery, we can add more money. And BOH is back house specialties, the genie lift, maybe you have a lift, maybe you don't need one. Normally, if it's a theater, a performing arts theater, and I've got to get up to my lights, we say, get a genie lift. So that's what number five is. The exterior signage is really the blade sign and the marquee. Yeah, we want them back. Everybody wants them back. But right now, we've got to get the building open. So we carry that as an ad-alternate. HVAC, it's a small number there, but there's ways to put in a more expensive system that'll have better returns on the side of the utility consumption. Security system, yes, we have a security system, but we don't have a lot of cameras. We can upgrade that. And then the ticket house, there's a ticket booth there now. If we did a full restoration of that piece, we'd spend a little bit more money. A different way to look at it, foundations, substructure, superstructure, exterior enclosure, roofing, interior construction, conveying, mechanical, conveying is the lift or the elevator and the lift onto the stage. This building would be fully handicapped accessible, both onto the stage and into the balcony. So that breaks it down into these divisions of a building. Still adds up to the same number, 5.879 million. We're just showing in what category those numbers go. We should also mention, when we do work, we retain the services, and that was part of our agreement with you, of a professional cost estimator. And in this case, we worked with O'Connor out of Washington DC. They've done a great deal of cost estimating for us. We had a few rounds with them on this. We create systems narratives, we give them that information, meaning how big is the mechanical equipment, how many amps do we need? And then they take all of that, and based on their expertise, they come up with a cost estimate. This is a little bit about soft costs. So what we're showing you, and we are 100% transparent here, what we're showing you is, Paul and Matt, what would it cost to do this work today? If you were to build this today, what would it cost? So it doesn't include some things. It doesn't, that 5.89 million does not include escalation to whatever year we're going to do. An escalation, depending on where you are in the country, it's maybe 3% or 4% or 5% or 2%. So it doesn't include escalation. It doesn't include what you're going to pay the design professionals. It doesn't include legal fees, it doesn't include other ancillary costs you might undertake. So we always say, allocate 20% to 25% soft costs on top of that, to create the project cost. So you have a construction cost of 5.89 million, but add on that 20% to 25% for soft costs. So that's what that slide's all about.
That even covers fundraising costs. Different owners structure that in different ways. Some owners push as much into soft costs as they can to avoid the GC markups, and maybe that owner's capable of doing a lot of the work themselves. So some projects, you have tremendous soft costs because they're pulling it out of the general construction. And then, you know, some owners want to minimize that, because they see that as a separate pot of money. So it can go either way, it's really hard for us to estimate, so we'd like to sort of throw this information out there for everyone.
We should also note that the construction estimate, that 5.89 million includes a contingency, I think of 10%. And that is, depending on, again, this is conceptual work, so is, is there more we're going to add? Is there something you want to add? Are there some changes we make? So there's 10%, if we don't ever use it, it goes back to you. But in a concept level, you should carry a contingency, a design, construction, owner We can come back to any of these. But here's what's really great about this project. It's what we call the trifecta. You have, this project can be eligible for federal rehabilitation tax credits, it can be eligible for state credits, and it can be eligible for new market tax credits, because it's within the census tract indicating it's the income level in that district. So when you start aggregating all of those, and yes, you have to create an LLC if you were to take on, because, and the building has to be put on the register, but if you start aggregating all of that, pretty soon you're at, holy cow, 40, 50% of the cost of the project. And yes, you have to, again, pay legal, and you've got to set up the LLC, and you've got to do the accounting, but you start taking a construction of 5.8 and say, well, the balance that I, this project really is 2.7 in terms of construction, because the rest of it is our tax credits that you have harvested, if you were to take advantage of those credits.
We also listed grants on here. Grants are another line item that is very hard to sort of gauge where that's going to fall, because we have some projects that just receive a couple of minor grants, we have other projects that they go after, really go after grants, so I have a full-time grant writer. We have a project in Flint, Michigan, that just got a $2 million grant, which is a huge rarity. I don't want to imply that that's something that just falls out of the trees, but there are some really large grants out there, but they can be very difficult to get. So we just threw a couple hundred thousand dollars under the grants column, just to make sure it's out there to discuss.
We've worked on over 30 tax credit projects in the country. And while Matt is the director of preservation for the firm, he also leads all of our tax credit work. So to have him at my side is, you know, is a dream come true.
This is just one of the quotes we included in the report. It says, "Theaters such as the Columbia speak to the spirit of a place, helping tell the unique story of Paducah and its inhabitants. Generations of patrons hold these cherished memories close to their hearts and are willing to make great efforts to assure that the physical touchstones of these memories, the theater itself, is not lost." I included the photo to the left, which is actually a sconce inside the theater itself. And it looks a little strange. You have this gold finish, and then this sort of strange ivory finish, like maybe somebody had slapped some white paint on it or something. You look at it, and it's like, hmm, maybe that needs some love. But you have to sort of picture the theater in the future. The way these sconces were put together, the gold portions that you see hold lights, and they almost always held colored lights. They'd have two or three circuits with different colors. And so the parts painted, the ivory, were painted that way, so they'd pick up whatever color light you put in it. So the lights would change as the show started, they'd change as the show ended. And today, we have lots of fun with LEDs, because you can get multiple programmable color-changing lights in these old sconces, and so you can fade and have different colors come up and down. And you can imagine that the impact you can have in the theater, once you've restored the historic lighting and the ceiling and the historic sconces on the side, you can really, really like this place to be a beautiful place that'll just take people's breath away. So we wanted to sort of end on that image, and then just like this great image from your mural wall. I just love the Columbia just jumping out with that giant blade sign. Gives us hope.
Thank you. That's what we have to show you tonight. And we're open to questions.
Thank you for your great presentation and the vision that you, as well as the Columbia Club, has for this wonderful place in Paducah.
You're welcome.
I do have a question. What happened to the blade sign?
So generally, historically, what often happens is one good storm will damage these, and often times, they didn't put proper lightning protection in them as well. So between the two, it was the death of a lot of blade signs historically.
How many are still in existence in this country, do you know?
Most of the ones you see now will be either heavily repaired, or redone, or restored. There aren't very many of this era, original blade signs left. They might have been, like I said, heavily repaired, with pieces from the original, but generally, they've been reworked.
Matt, I should ask you this question, but I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If you were to draw a radius around Paducah of 100 miles, how many, any idea of what, how many of these kinds of theaters are out there?
So the Scoros style is, there were a lot of those done. The Adamesque style is actually fairly uncommon on theaters. I've been actually doing multiple searches, trying to find any theater where those two kind of came together in a combination. I have not found any other theater with these sort of two unique styles working together or trying to live together. So it's really, when I walked into it, I'd never seen anything quite like it, and I've seen a lot of theaters. It's very unique. It's really, it's a nice little gem. And I don't say that about everybody's theater. Sometimes you're like, yes, it's a beautiful theater, but it's, just saying, this is actually very unique. So I'm really impressed.
But you will find in most small towns in America, there's still a theater here or there. And I see most of them, I think. But unfortunately, those that are in existence that are single-screen, that are still 35-millimeter, are in real trouble, because they will not be able to continue on if they don't make the digital conversion. So maybe it's, we don't have the number of how many. I can, I'm sure as a board member of the League of Historic American Theaters, I can get that answer. But there are, you go to a small town, whether it's Hicksville, Ohio, or San Clemente, California, or you will likely find an old opera house or a theater.
I guess I was about from the, we get it pulled off, and how big a draw is it, where it's okay, and within, there are just not many of these things that are up and running and...
I think another way to look at it is, are you bringing the right use to this building for this market? If you were to make this another performing arts center and compete with Market House, compete with the Carson Center, I think that would be the wrong thing. But if you're providing another form of entertainment and use for this market, then you're doing the right thing. I had a serendipitous experience just this past Friday that's indirectly related to this, and I shared it with a few, but I want to share it with you and the power of, I think, what you have here, if you take this on and you get involved with the Scoros. I was invited Friday, I was in Los Angeles at, in downtown Los Angeles, the old Broadway Theater District, there's about nine historic theaters still existing. Some of them are, you can't even find, they've become garment shops and others. But an amazing one, United Artists Theater. And one of the Scoros was the president of United Artists. I had a tour of on Friday, this past Friday, and it's been closed, because it was a church. And it wasn't open to the public unless you were part of that congregation. And it's going to reopen next month. You know, the original United Artists Theater in Los Angeles is going to reopen, and that goes back to the lineages of the Scoros. So somehow, we're going to spin that into an amazing story from Paducah, Kentucky. But there it is.
The style is unique, it's very, very unique, and you guys should be really excited to have it. I just think you'll be amazed at the impact it'll have on the downtown area. Generally, people tend to underestimate the positive effects of opening theater in an area, especially early on, when you're just trying to pencil out the numbers to see what kind of economic impact it has. Beyond economics, it gives people just an excuse. Beyond economics, it gives people just an excuse to sort of rediscover downtown. And it's a great, it's a great feeling.
We also call it ancillary development. If the theater comes back online, and yes, then the coffee shop next door, then, then the little IT startup happens. And it happens. It really, really, really does happen. And we've seen it in tough markets, markets much tougher than this, where this, as the driver, the economic driver spurs other development. When we finish, and if there are no more questions, we do want to talk about just some suggested next steps. Because I don't, we're at a, you know, we've come to a point here. It's a study, but how do we take a study into implementation? And I think there's some other steps that need to be taken. But let's continue on with questions and answers if we can. There are others.
Actually, what's my question? What's the next steps?
Seven of them that we came up with. We think you need to work to get the building on the national register. It's part of a district. But that only allows you to capture a 10% credit through the, through the historic restoration. But if it's separately listed, then, then it's a 20%. I don't know if you have a business plan yet for this, but is there a business plan? And have you looked at earned income, you know, revenue versus earnings and earned versus contributed and all of that? I think you really have to have a sound business plan. If you're going to ask people for money, have a business plan. I think you need to start the process of tax credits. I think there's someone in the audience here who's well aware of what we're talking about. But there is timing for these different things to make yourself eligible to get these credits to fall within the sequence of the project. If you haven't, I think, and I know there's a fundraising consultant that's been involved in town at the Market House. But I think you should start thinking about, you know, some fundraising support if you don't have that. Remediation of hazardous materials. Randy's done a great job of doing some of, identifying that in the theater. But before a contractor goes into this building, we either have to have it clean or we have to know what's left in place. So that's remediation of hazardous materials. I think continuing to clean out the theater and having what we call light demolition is really important. And I would tag on to that tours. I was in Lewistown, Pennsylvania, 12-5. And they have something called the Festival of Ice. And we cleaned out the theater and at the same time, we presented the design. And it was, it was like a smash. But people saw that progress was made just by cleaning out the theater. And there, and the last item, and there's others, but seven seem to be a good number. There's some remedial work you need to undertake. Where the terracotta on the facade comes to that brick by the Catholic Church, it's open and water's getting in and freeze thaw is going to happen. And water is your worst enemy here. So there's, we've got to find a few nickels to hire someone to do some top pointing to seal that up. So those are some, some next steps we would suggest.
Would you be willing to reduce those to writing and pass them on?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yep.
Any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I have just, just a couple of comments. A couple of things is unique about this is that a lot of folks around here remember going downtown to watch a movie. We currently have the theater downtown Maiden Alley, which is doing great. And so there's always, there's already a, a group that comes, that's used to come in downtown watching movies to expand that to, to the Columbia. And what it already brings to the table is a nice mix. The logistical infrastructures items that you just mentioned, you know, that will obviously have to be addressed. But if you're going to do something like this, lay it out. If this is what it takes to bring it to where it needs to be, now's the time to look at that. And so those seven steps that you mentioned, as moving forward, Commissioner Wilson was also talking about, I think, are appropriate.
I think we're at an interesting time in our country. You know, after the, you know, the 2007 and 2008 and the fall of the economy. And I really, truly believe people are looking at the assets they have in their communities and realizing it's less expensive to work with the infrastructure you have than extending the infrastructure. And I just think it's, the time is in our favor in this country to reinvest in our communities. We see it everywhere, from San Clemente to Fox Fullerton to Rome, New York, to Stanton, Virginia, theaters we work on, and closed theaters all over the country.
Would a business plan show all the needs for it? I mean, show all the uses, I guess that could be done. I know you all have done some study on that in the past, but, okay.
Yeah, you project likely uses, number of ticket sales, cost of sales, ticket sales, concession sales, and then what is, you know, how many FTEs? We don't do the business plans. We just encourage you to do the business plans so you can know how, how is this going to operate financially?
And I know the plan is really for it to complement Maiden Alley. It would be an expansion of it, certainly, you know, some to add to it, right? And your seats now at Maiden Alley are, what, number?
141.
141. And this was, you know, quite a bit significantly higher, so, yeah.
There's one of the screens upstairs would have 140, 114 on the other. And I think we're in the range of 250 on the, on the main level.
Right, yeah. That stage would accommodate that.
Exactly.
I'm a big fan of the comedy action, or the comedy angle too would actually work very well for this sort of...
You know, it seemed to me that would be, that this is also maybe the right time to do a project like this, or try to do a project like this. In that it's been about 30 years since it's been closed. So for somebody who may have been 25, and you can just add 30 years to each of those ages, and that's what they are now. If we wait too long, there won't be anybody who left, who's left to remember what it looked like. So this may be our last great opportunity.
It's interesting. Again, 1927, it was built. 1940s, the Scoros made the changes. 1970, the theater upstairs was added in the 70s. 1987, it closed. Roughly 30 years later, 90-year anniversary, we reopened.
I mean, after all, somebody who's my age, who remembers it being open at 63, would be, you know, 90 now and, you know, probably past their, not able to give in 93.
We're all ready to give.
Ready to give.
Maybe they might be.
Anyway, it's a good time for it.
I think you have some incredible assets in this community. When we came here and I knew Quilter's World and a few of the other things from Family and Friends, but you, you, what is it? Rivers? Well, you have that, that three-word. Art, rhythm, and rivers, yeah. So I think you capitalize on that and one feeds off the other. Ivan, I called Randy to make sure it was okay if I said this, but could you imagine if, if, let's say we, the murals happened or never happened, but we recreated them? Why wouldn't we create those in textile? You know, why wouldn't we quilt those murals? Wouldn't that be something for this place?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, did you have something to say?
Well, I was just going to ask if the next step would be, the commission could expect would be for the Columbia Club to come forward with a business plan. Is that what you're thinking? And would that be probably by early spring, before then? Okay.
Good.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go on to our motions. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the following documents be received and filed. See if everybody gets this important announcement I'm making. Documents. Commercial guarantee loan instrument with Regions Bank for Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, GPDC. Agreements, contracts. A, Change Order Number One with Midstates Construction Company for Bob Noble Park Pool Concessions Renovation Project. B, Concrete Program, one-year renewal agreement with Harper Construction LLC. C, Agreement to Purchase Police Vehicles with Limwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC. D, Limestone, one-year renewal agreement with Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company. Number three, Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for October 2013.
Second. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Cindy.
Good evening. Mayor and Commissioner, just available for questions if you have them.
Any questions for Cindy? Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Ordinance adoption. So these are some things we've talked about already. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a strategic health risk advisory, strategic benefit placement service, services contract with Peel and Holland Financial Group for administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a strategic health risk advisory and strategic benefit placement service contract with Peel and Holland Financial Group in the amount of $71,900 payable in four equal installments of $17,975 each for administration services pertaining to the administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. An additional fee of $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000, will be charged for services requested by the city or the city's legal counsel for issues that arise in connection with employer, employee bargaining, legal matters, disputes, or other similar issues. This contract is made for the 2014 calendar year.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the rates for consulting and management services for chronic health conditions for full-time city employees covered by the city's group health insurance plan with Edgemetics LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah approves an agreement for services with Edgemetics LLC for consulting and management services for chronic health conditions for full-time city employees and covered by the city's group health insurance plan with Edgemetics LLC. There will be a one-time fee of $7,100 for the program management fee and a 10% share of cost savings calculated by comparison to a baseline of claims data that is to be recalculated every six months. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute said agreement. The initial term of the agreement shall be for two years and shall begin on January 1st, 2014 and end on December 31st, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving hotel development agreement among the City of Paducah, Kentucky Convention Center Hotel LLC, David M. Puckett, Todd M. Clark, John M. Clark, David B. Jones, Glenn R. Malone, Eddie Corley, and Garrett Forbes Mathew, with respect to a public project authorizing the execution of the hotel development agreement and other documents related thereto. This is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah City to approve a hotel document agreement with Paducah Convention Hotel LLC, a Kentucky limited liability company, David M. Puckett, Todd M. Clark, John M. Clark, David B. Jones, Glenn R. Malone, Eddie Corley, and Garrett Forbes Mathew for the development and the construction of an upscale hotel on city-owned real property generally located along and near Fourth Street and Executive Boulevard in downtown Paducah adjacent to a publicly owned convention center generally known as the Julian Carroll and Paducah Expo Convention Center.
Second. Any discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to ordinances, introduction, no, Commissioner Wilson, we have one more, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a loan agreement between the City of Paducah and Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah is hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into a loan agreement in the amount of $225,000 with Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board for capital improvement project and equipment needs for the Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course. The city will make the loan from the Fleet Enterprise Fund for a period of 10 years. Annual payment on the loan will be $22,500 plus annual accrued interest at a rate that reflects the earning on city demand deposits not to exceed 2.5%.
Second.
Any comments? I was at Starnes today picking up barbecue and someone that I won't mention was saying something about those commissioners. And I went over and I said, now be careful what you say. But they were talking about the golf course and that they were very happy that we were doing this and the benefit of Paxton Park. So I told them not to worry.
Good.
All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Go into our introductions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperation agreement between the United States of America Department of the Army Corps of Engineers for rehabilitation of federal flood control work. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a corporation, a cooperation agreement between the United States of America Department of Army Corps of Engineers for rehabilitation assistance for damages sustained to the City of Paducah levee system during the 2011 flood pursuant to Public Law 84-99 as documented in the USACE's project information reports approved by the Division Engineer on November 21st, 2013.
Second. Eric?
Hello. Good evening. Mayor Commission, this particular agreement that's before you this evening, Commissioner Abraham read about Public Law 84-99. As a result of our maintaining, the city maintaining the flood wall in its condition that it stays in the best we can get it for a 65-year-old flood wall, we qualify for 100% repair due to floods. And that's what the 84, Public Law 84-99 does for you. For example, the 2011 flood came and went. It left some damage. And there's a portion of the riverfront that's sloughing off down by the river port. We had fixed it one time before. We fixed it for about $100,000. Now the Corps is going to come in and fix it for $1.6 million. Okay, your capital outlay for this, order... Your, your capital outlay for this, order magnitude is about $15,000, pretty good return on your money. And all we, all we need to do is just provide them some soil that they'll use in the embankment. They're actually going to put in sheet piling along the riverbank. They're going to have to remove, they're going to have to remove the stone that was previously placed, stored it, restore the riverbank, drive the sheet piling, and this is in cooperation also with the Paducah River Port Authority, of whom we've been working with Ken Cantor.
And will we ever use this again? Is this a one-time thing?
No. Actually, if we had repetitive floods, I mean, every, if, so long as we stay qualified in the Public Law 8499 program, if we have, let's say, another flood in five years, and let's say that flood leaves damages and we're, and we're in, we're qualifying for that, the damages that, that future flood might leave, we would ask for reparations for that in the future. So long as we stay qualified with that in the 84, Public Law 8499 program, this, this can be repetitive.
Is this a new law?
No. This was actually, we've been in this ever since we've been a part of the flood wall. But with exception of when our corrugated metal pipes got so deteriorated and we had not repaired them, that we actually, I guess, fell out of the program and we had to work real hard to get back in the program, and that was why we repaired the pipes. We were pretty much forced to do that. You couldn't wait any longer on that. And as a result of that, I mean, the timing of repairing those pipes, it couldn't have been better because we got them done in 2009, and then we had the biggest flood in 2011 since the 37 flood. Had those pipes not been repaired, I don't know that we would be so fortunate to be talking about this now. We might have a whole lot bigger problems than that.
Was that the slip lining?
Yes.
So as long as we maintain the flood wall according to their standards, then we would apply, we would be eligible?
We qualify, yes, ma'am.
All right, sounds good. City Managers' Report.
I'm always disappointed when Rick talks about the Corps of Engineers and he doesn't show us his business card list from the Corps that's about 80 feet long. PRDA meets tomorrow at 1:15 in the meeting room at the lower level of City Hall. I want to remind the public, those meetings are open to the public. People are encouraged to attend. The focus of the meeting tomorrow, I think, is going to be on the landmass slash park area and what is in the current design now. And so the group will spend a fair amount of their time reviewing that aspect of the project tomorrow. Rick asked me to mention to you all in the community that as of right now, with the river being up a bit, you cannot launch a boat, boat at the foot of Broadway, but at the new boat launch, you can, and there are 85 places to park, so. Would be first come, first served? There's plenty of room, so we're going to anticipate a logjam, but the water may rise down there a bit over the weekend, so we'll have to wait and see. PRA Main Street Organization is going hot and heavy. We, we did get the advertisements out for the new position last Friday already, and we're already seeing a, a lot of activity come in for both positions, so we're encouraged by the interest there. As of right now, the intention would be to no longer have a presence at the building on Broadway after the first of the year. We're working on the necessary communications to get out there through various media that we have available. For now, essentially, anything associated with events, planning, and management would be in Park and Rec, probably directed to Mark Thompson, the department director. Things associated with downtown development, programs, building, preservation, and restoration would go to the Planning Department and particularly Steve Irwin until we get staff on board, so we'll keep you advised of all of that as we proceed. And last thing, on behalf of the director team and all the city employees, I want to wish everybody in the Greater Paducah area a Merry Christmas. That's all I have.
All right, any comments, commission comments?
I've got, I like, yeah, I've got one. When we approved the hotel agreement, or we made the announcement last week, I've had several people, more than a few, come to me and say, look, Alan, so you guys really didn't do anything, you don't have an agreement because you didn't name the hotel. And the story I tell them, because it really sort of gets me that people would say things like that, is, okay, let's say that, let's say that Rick decides he wants to be, to have a etc. coffeehouse franchise. Well, to do that, it'd be kind of like this hotel thing, and let me just tell my little If Rick came to us and said, look, I'd like to franchise your coffeehouse, we'd say, well, okay, Rick, but you have to have a location and a bank. And then, by the way, you know, we do things a real particular way, you know, we want to have, you know, these four kinds of sugars and we want, as far as creamers, you can't use a moo cup, you've got to have, you know, skim milk and vitamin D and half and half and soy milk. In other words, we're going to lay down this long list of things that Rick would have to do, or whoever to be our franchisee for the coffeehouse. And after you completed this long list, and it'll be a lot of training, then we might say, well, okay, Rick, you've done all this work and because you've done it successfully and because you agree to do all the things we ask you to do, you can't cut any corners, then we'll let you be a franchise for etc. coffee. And you just have to do it this way, and so you go get all this stuff done first, and after you get everything done and prove to our satisfaction that you will represent us well, then we'll give you the franchise. And my guess is, and I've never started a hotel or built a hotel, but my guess is, is that whoever the successful franchise that'll put their flag on the new hotel is, they probably do it much the same way because they want to make sure that the new hotel represents that franchise well, just like we would make sure that whoever represented our franchise would represent it well. So to everybody who gets all wound up that the hotel wasn't named, well, just take a breath and it'll be okay. And trust me, or trust us, it's going to be all right.
Trust us, we're the government.
We're the government, that's all right. And Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
I have a comment, too.
Yeah, I do, too, after you, after you finish.
Okay. I would just like to say that we had a wonderful Christmas parade this past Saturday and just wanted to compliment Parks Department on a great job, especially with the fact that we had to change the date, reorganize everything. You all really pulled that one off well. And I personally want to thank Paducah Water for sponsoring the mayor's float and the Parks Department for the wonderful work you did on that. You let me be the designer and, and you did all the work and didn't let me get in your hair too much, so it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it. The symphony afterwards, you know, downtown was really busy last Saturday, there was a lot going on. And today I had a meeting with Steve Irwin, Heidi with PCM, Monica with United Way, Jim and Libby Wade with the Episcopal Church, and we, and others that were in this meeting as well that, and we talked about the warming centers that we've started here in Paducah. And Jim and Libby have done a, an amazing job. They, they have their books together, they have the volunteer list, they've done an exceptional job, and they said, you know, they were blessed by being able to do this. And so we have two other churches that have signed up for the remainder. We have January, we do not have a church, we're still looking for a church for January. But we talked about how this needs to be moved forward next year to a more permanent central location that's used every year, maybe use the volunteers that we have, but have a central location each year, so everyone knows where that location is. And that's, that's all I have to say. I think that Christmas has been beautiful this year so far. It's going to be a wonderful Christmas season here in Paducah. And that's, just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Last, last Tuesday, I wasn't, I wasn't here for the, for the announcement I really wanted to be. It was, it was, it was great. I saw it on, on YouTube. It was, you guys were great. I was in Lexington for a board meeting for the Kentucky Black Caucus, which is the Kentucky Black Caucus of local elected officials. And I'm first vice president of that. So we were laying out our, our calendar for the year, and it was held at the Kentucky League of Cities office, in, which I'd never, I'd never ventured in. It was a very busy place. It's a lot of things going on. So we laid our top three focal points for 2014. It hasn't changed a whole lot, but education and youth rest, full restoration of voting rights for those, those folks that have completed their, off paper, so to speak. They've done everything they were supposed to do by law, and so that's, that's an important issue. And also economic development and employment. So we laid those out, and our spring summit will be in Bardstown, Kentucky, and get a chance to visit with my friend Bill Sheckles, the mayor there. But I just want to bring you up to speed on that. And March 5th is the 50th anniversary of the March on Frankfurt, which is, it's going to be a pretty big event. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on the travels.
All right, we're going to, we're going to ask for another short executive session, but before we do that, we wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
It's the city manager's favorite part, right here.
These are getting kind of small. Are you changing hats?
Or is your head getting bigger?
I think that's what it is.
It's the laundry.
So wishing everyone out there a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Steve. It'll be posted in a moment, yes.
And tomorrow's our employee Christmas party.
What time is that?
Christmas dinner starts at 11:30.
11:30.
So we have some fun things for the employees tomorrow, too. Who has, who?
I have it.
Did you bring these?
Are you ready? I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, issues which might lead to the appointment, dismissal, or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61.8101F.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay.
There'll be no action.
No, there'll be no action, so meeting is adjourned.